The whole meeting for February fifteenth, twenty-two, two quarter with adoption of the agenda, and I like that the agenda be adopted and as amended to include the capital plan for the general fund. And I think you all have a handout, but there were links and it wasn't connecting anywhere. So someone want to make that motion for me, please? Counselor Sherlett, second by Counselor Brooks Hill, all in favor, motions carried. And moving on to ninety-eight staff reports, Ms. McCabe will leave it to you.
Thanks, Your Worship. I don't have a formal presentation for today. I felt it was more important to just have a conversation with counsel regarding the information in the report. And so rather than doing a PowerPoint presentation, I'm just going to speak to the items that are in the report, if that's okay?
Yes.
So just to begin with, this is obviously a review of the current situation or state of the nation, as I think some people would refer to it as. There will be a business plan that Mr. Thackeray is working on that will also be coming forward that will expand on this information. So we're looking at some of the issues, some of the changes in the budget. But and there's there are some options being provided, but at this point, not necessarily looking for council resolutions or decisions to be made. So there is a number of new pieces of information that I provided this year in response to some of the requests I've received from individual council members, as well as the Finance Committee. And so I've started out, though, with a summary document that summarizes all of the changes, and I've categorized them, and we'll go through that in a few minutes. There's also some of the usual documents, such as the actual long-term financial plan, the operating and the capital documents. There's also some new information. So I've provided some historical analysis on the budget to actuels for the general operating, as was requested, I believe, by one of the counselors. I've also provided some reconciliation of the general reserves, so for a number of years, showing where we started, what we put in, what we spent, and then what we're left with at the end of each of the years. So hopefully, that information helps council get an understanding of where we're at now and how we got here. So I will, if there's not any others, I'm going to start with the budget review document that identifies the changes, which is tab one in the information you've been given. So if everyone can go to that page, we'll start there.
All right, thank you.
So this this document is split out into four different sections. And so I'm starting out with what I'm calling the unavoidable budget increases. So these are increases that are usually influenced by contractual obligations or external environments that we don't have any control over. And so there's adjustments that have to be made. There is one small change that has really no impact. I've just highlighted it because we've talked about it in some other reports and things to do with the garbage. So I did bring that to council's attention. There are some changes. The next section is the changes that do have a budget impact. And I start out with the ones that are going to increase the operating budget or the spending that needs to be done. And then I also show the ones that actually have a positive impact. I like to end with the positive stuff because there is some some good news out of all of this. So when we're looking at the unavoidable expenses, the increases, the first one is the liability insurance. We've definitely seen an increase in the premiums we're having to pay for our liability insurance. In the last few years, it's gone up about thirty percent. And so the budget will need to be increased to reflect what we're actually paying at this point. The next one is the RCMP contract. I'm sure you're all aware of that. Over the years, I have been increasing the contract by a cost of living adjustment. And so the adjustment, we need to get to the final number. At this point, one hundred percent cost of an RCMP member is about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The city pays seventy percent of that because we are under fifteen thousand in population. And so this is and we budget for twelve members. And so this reflects the budget. This is how much I have to increase the budget by to get us to that point. If you want the general operating fund, the next document will provide you with the actual budget totals on it.
Counselor Ryan has a question, Ms. McCabe.
Sure.
The province pays seventy, and we pay thirty, but then it switches to ninety-ten.
Nope.
Okay, good. Okay, so yeah, okay, so seventy, and then it goes bumps up to ninety when we pass that threshold. Okay.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifty thousand people, right?
That, yes.
And then just to confirm, Ms. McCabe, with that hundred and ninety thousand, that basically boils down to a car and all the benefits and everything that come with a police officer, correct?
Yes, that is a loaded cost. There is an additional amount that we budget for what they call overtime. That's an additional amount on top of that. And then there's what we call keep of prisoners or prison guards. That's an additional amount on top of that budget as well. And then there's some additional payments that add up to about fifteen thousand dollars a year that have to do with some settlement agreements, perseverance pay and something about green timbers, which I believe is the E Division's nice building down in Surrey.
Yeah, and all of us are paying for that beautiful building.
We are.
Now the, anyway, I won't go there.
[laughing]
Counselor Ryan.
Have we budgeted for when the population is expected to surpass fifteen thousand into our long-term budget?
Not at this point. That is out beyond, I believe, the fifteen-year horizon, but it'll definitely be something we'll be watching for, yes.
Interesting. Feels like it's like a far, given what we know from the tell us data, but I guess this was all census information.
Yes, this is based on census, not tell us data, thank goodness.
It's interesting to see, you know, the small amount of increase since two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-one, looking at that. But anyway, yeah, we're okay with that.
Are you talking about the increase in the cost per officer or the increase in our budget?
No, we're just talking about the increase in population.
Yes. Oh, yes, yes. It wasn't actually that large of an increase, though, I don't believe.
Nine percent.
Nine percent.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thanks.
So the next item is the transit contract. So I'm not sure if council remembers, but in two thousand twenty-one, BC Transit gave us a gave the city and probably all municipalities a credit because of the impact of the pandemic. And so that credit will not be received in two thousand twenty-two. And so we've had to increase the budget back to the full amount for two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, I don't understand why we would have removed that from the budget in the first place if we knew it wasn't going to be a consistently given credit.
It was done to reflect what was actually required. Maybe it didn't need to be done, but then we would have been, yeah, we would have been taxing for more than what we needed in for that particular year.
So we knew ahead of setting the budget that we were going to get this credit?
Yes.
I don't, yeah, I don't know. That's interesting, because I don't remember that discussion, that maybe because it got lost in all of the.
In transit.
In transit, there you go. Okay.
Steve, Mr. Black?
Thank you, Director McCabe. To mayor and council, yes, if you recall, we did come to council with a, it was a one-time offset for lost revenue that we came to council with. I believe it was in March of last year, because we lost approximately two years of revenue amounting to, I believe, around fifty thousand dollars in total. Please don't quote me on that number. I'm not a finance person, but I just wanted to remind council of that of that action. And that is where the province did try to make us whole with the loss of revenue from ridership. And so this year, we don't expect to get that offsetting revenue from the province. So we will be hoping to recover some of that revenue through rides and ticket sales.
Great, thank you. Counselor Elliott? You're muted.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Just just on that transit issue, we have a single year contract, is that right?
Through your worship to Counselor Elliott, we have an annual operating agreement that we bring to council every year. That should be coming forth, I believe, in the next few months for twenty-two, twenty-three. But it is an annual contract that we do come to council with with the terms of reference for that service.
May continue. Yeah, the last time they came to council with the contract proposal, it was going, they were going to come back to us with some revisions or some some alternatives six months down the road, just some new ideas on our transit, because it just, to me, is a constant thorn that I watch that bus go by empty all the time. And I just can't believe it's taken four years to get to an actual time where we can actually do something about it. And I'm, go ahead.
Through your worship to Counselor Elliott, yes, transit did last spring do an evaluation of the community's operations, did do outreach through email and paper ballots to understand what concerns are. That report is in draft form and should be coming to council to the next committee of the whole meeting for your review. That report does address items that you have just raised and does talk to operational changes that we can then apply for, hopefully in the next twelve to sixteen months, to consolidate services. So a bunch of moving parts there, too, Counselor, that we will be coming forward with. And in addition to that component of BC Transit and the Resort Shuttle Service, our transportation master plan, transit component or section of that master plan will also be coming forward with policy recommendations, so that once it's adopted by council, it becomes a direction that the community can proceed with in achieving the goals that you and I and staff have talked about for the duration of my arrival in Revelstoke. And so it unfortunately, it has taken time, but we will get there.
Thank you, Stephen. I'm sorry for being a broken record, but I just keep pushing for it.
I completely understand and appreciate your concerns. We both, we both share that.
Okay.
You know what? Thank Counselor Elliott. Wheels on the bus go round and round. I'll leave it at that. Let's move on.
On that note, the next one on the list is the software licensing costs. And so I believe it was a year ago, two years ago, we did increase the budget for this, but we're finding it needs to be increased again. The pandemic has definitely changed the way the city does business and the way we, the software we use and the way we use it. There's been a shift from also from server-based to cloud-based software. And of course, that means we go from having larger periodic lump sum payments to buy software to much larger or more regular payments on an annual basis. And so this is having to be reflected in the budget. There's a lot of costs for all of the online, the cloud-based software that we use, particularly Office three sixty-five. There's a few others that are that are, and we also, each department has its own software that is specific to that department and what they use. And obviously, there's a cost for doing that. I can't imagine us doing business without that software. And so it is unfortunately, an unavoidable increase that we're going to have to include in the budget.
Counselor, another question.
Has every department always had their own software?
Yeah, we all have different needs, obviously. Financial software is not the same software that Parks and Rec will need to manage all of their bookings and their facility usage, which would be different again than the mapping services and the software that engineering would use, for instance. So yes, they are very unique. It is what makes municipalities, I think, a little bit different. We do so many different things, so we can't have just one software to do all things for all departments.
Yeah, but the city could switch over to Microsoft Teams and Office three sixty-five, like before the pandemic, and the software companies have been billing like this for years now. So I'm confused why.
No, we, the shift to Office three sixty-five happened with with the pandemic and Teams as well. We were always using Microsoft Office. Sorry, I don't want to, don't want to confuse. We always have used Microsoft Office. What we've shifted from is doing the Office three sixty-five version of it.
Right. And and the increase wasn't enough, I guess?
Unfortunately, not. The costs of software are definitely increasing. I'm sure that if we requested, Jeff, he could provide us with a very detailed explanation of all the different softwares and what they cost. And he has provided me that in the past, which is where we've come up with this number. And it is quite an extensive lift. So we have a lot more users as well than what we used to have. So more people that need to have access to even just an Office three sixty-five account. And there is a cost, unfortunately, for that. Gone are the days twenty years ago, when you could have one license or have concurrent licenses, rather than everybody having their own. Unfortunately, the companies have caught up with that, right?
Right.
Counselor Sherlett.
Thank you, Worship. I'm curious as to with the software licensing, as we prepare training for the next council, not necessarily for us, I don't think, but when we got the org charts and the organizational maps of how all the different departments fit together, one thing that I found really useful in my business, and I'm curious as to whether what the city has is a data plan and a strategy for all the software pieces of how they interact within each department, but then also how they interact with the public as the users and how council can then facilitate that. One thing I'm finding, for example, one of the examples of that would be top Revelstoke, where the more comfortable we are with how the community can interact with that, the better we can provide that championing out to the community of how that gets used. And I think as we go through the budgets and as we go, as we learn, and as the next council learns about the organizational parts, is having that understanding of the software infrastructure behind it, I think will help having with having a more functional conversation going forward, too. And to make sure that we're using all of the features that we can of these various, very expensive software systems that have all these bells and whistles. But if you don't understand how they can benefit the work and the communication, you're not going to make use of those as best.
So that's a, that's a good point, because maybe, Ms. McCabe, we could have Mr. Wilson or one of his colleagues come and explain those sorts of things, kind of in the terms that Counselor Sherlett is mentioning, so that we have a better understanding of how everything's integrated across the board.
Yeah, no, it's, it's very true. It is quite a complex structure that the city has because of the different, the nature of the differences between the natures of the different departments and what they do, which is definitely much different than what a lot of businesses will have maybe an operational software and a financial software. Our operational side of things is definitely, there's a lot of different areas, and they're very differently run. And so they do, they have their own software. And it, it can definitely be confusing to somebody coming in from the outside. I definitely don't know how they all work. I know how the financial software works, obviously, and I'm very good with Microsoft Excel in particular. But beyond that, yeah, how the rest of it works, I'm not sure. We could certainly talk to Jeff about potentially providing something.
And I think especially for some of the software that all the departments use, like yes, there's going to be the unique ones for each department, but if everyone's using Microsoft Office and everyone's using Microsoft Teams, if we have a shared understanding of what features we're using as a team, like, for example, we were talking today about Word document that Tim and I were collaborating on with Ms. Donato, and how she'd left comments in the document. Well, I would really appreciate having access to a shared document we can leave comments on for clarifying questions. Because then when we ask the clarifying question, it's not in an email linked to the document, it's on the document. And to me, that saves me quite a bit of time. If all the members of the team understand how those features can be used, then we're getting the benefit of this hundred thousand dollars we're investing. But there will be little pieces of software that can be used across departments. For example, if the communications contractor is using Canva for design, then other departments could have access to that same Canva account to get the templates, to get the colors, to then be working together on projects like that, that then takes it off the side of a desk and makes it a little bit more facilitated.
Definitely makes sense. And most of us do use things like, we all use Outlook, we all use Office three sixty-five, within which we use Word and Excel in particular. But yeah, the collaboration ability within the software is quite, is quite, quite strong and quite powerful. And so, yeah, it's, it's definitely something we use within city staff. And so looking at how we can expand that out is, yeah, yeah, good point.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. The last one of the unavoidable expenses is the, what I call the COLA. And my apologies, I realize I left it in there as an acronym and didn't spell it out for you. That is what is called the cost of living adjustment. So that is the annual increase that is built into the collective agreement. And it's two percent per year. We have a budget, well, in two thousand twenty-one, we had a budget of about eight point five million dollars for wages. And so an additional two percent on that gives us a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And that is, again, that's for per the collective agreement. That increase is also given to exempt staff and counselors as well, per policy. So.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions, Counselors? Counselor Elliott has a handout.
Yes, Your Worship, just the cost of living increment. You've negotiated two percent. The inflation rate is four percent. Do you anticipate it more for next year?
It's in a collective agreement. So I believe the current one is five years, and I believe it's nineteen to twenty-three. So then there would be some negotiations with the union after that.
So with the negotiations and the union after, are they going to come back with retroactive increases and?
Yeah, usually that is what happens. And if, obviously, once this current contract ends, then going forward, I would be accruing expense each year for retroactive pay until it's actually paid out, so that we're capturing that within our actual expenses each year. What that percentage is, I'll, yeah, we'll come up with an estimate of what we think it's going to be. And usually, we look at other union contracts and what other communities have been settling, because there's obviously a number of different QP locals that all independently negotiate with their local council or their local government. So, yeah, I would be following what they're doing and using that as a guideline for what to use for us. Because normally, collective agreements are not ratified before the previous one expires, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's just one of the baggage things that, I mean, sometimes they win. You know, had inflation been at zero, they would have had two. So it's really, if they sign a five year contract, that's, that's the, that's the commitment for both. So, so, you know, you don't want, but my take is you don't want to give them anticipating paying this all back in the future, because then it sets them up. So it's easy to give, you know, three percent that they missed this year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So just, it's just part, part of the negotiating contract.
Yeah, it definitely is. Yes, yes. So, yeah. Are there other questions about the unavoidable increases?
Carry on, thanks.
So the one that changes, I'm saying it has a minimal impact. I mean, it does have an impact on the end user, which is the residents, because they all pay garbage fees. But on the general operating budget, it doesn't have an impact per se. And that's because we're going to, we've increased the budget, because tipping fees, we've been told by the regional district, will be going up this year. They've been at eighty dollars a ton for a long time. And I believe they're going up to, I think it's a hundred and twenty dollars a ton. And so we've included that estimate in the budget and then increased garbage fees accordingly, or at least as a proposed increase to the garbage fees and the fees and charges by law amendment to cover that increased budget. We try to make sure that the garbage function is not being subsidized at all by taxation.
Great, thank you. Counselor Palmer?
Just for clarity, then, you're anticipating the regional district is asking for a fifty percent increase.
Yes, that's what they've told us. Yes, it's supposed to be, I believe, my understanding is that to non-municipal customers, it's two forty a ton. And so we've been paying eighty dollars a ton. But they are proposing that that is going to be going up to a hundred and twenty a ton. And that is to do with the composting. Steve, Mr. Black might be able to speak to that more. I know there has been some conversations had with the presentations from the regional district to council in the past. And I believe there is more coming to explain that. And that will be part of it.
Mr. Black can comment?
Thank you, Worship. To Counselor Palmer, as Director McCabe has described, yes, the regional district did indicate to us that they were proposing to raise the fees by fifty percent early in the year when we came to council with the initiation of a Bear Smart Community Program. And so that's where that, that information came forth at that time. To date, we do not have a firm date of that change in fee. However, we are relatively certain in the next few months, we will have the compost facility open. And so that's the opportunity for the regional district to further encourage the separation of garbage from compost. And that would be the time that that would occur. And so we anticipate that would happen in the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, through the director. So on that forty-four thousand, and I know you have the revenues and stuff, but Tanya, are we, is that prorated based on a half year? Okay.
Yes. And it is also, I believe, adjusted for volume, because there is an expectation that as composting comes in, volumes will reduce as well. So that is built in there as well.
Right.
And that was all done by the previous, was it Caitlin, I believe, was her name? Anyway, it was done by the engineering department. There were some estimates made.
Yeah, all right. Any other comments, questions regarding tipping fees? Thing now to move on? Oh, Mr. Elliott, go ahead.
You're muted again, Mr. Elliott.
Mr. Elliott, okay, just on the compost fees, would they, they're less than the actual regular garbage that we're dumping, right? And so.
I believe so. I don't know if they're actually less or the same as what we're paying currently.
Right. So there will be, how will you track, you'll have a waste removal and a separate one for composting. Is that part of the plan?
Mr. Black?
Your worship to Counselor Elliott, if, my recollection, and this is a few months ago now, is that I think we, our waste stream is about fifty percent compostables and fifty percent garbage. So the fees are eighty dollars for the mixed refuse now, and they're proposed to go to, I believe, a hundred and twenty and a hundred. So by actually entering into the composting program and getting that diversion from the waste stream to organic composting, the, the rate should be just slightly more than what we're paying now, as long as we achieve that diversion. As you're aware, we do not have a composting program at this time for the municipality. However, that does not mean that the community members cannot, can go to the landfill and do their own composting. So as far as the rate, it's measured by tone. And so there's a scale when we enter the landfill. And so we would pay on a ton, a tonnage basis for those materials.
So, so, okay, the compost bins, are they the city's responsibility to pay, pay for those things as they disperse throughout the community?
At this point in time, we do not have a compost program in place. If you recall, we came to council in, I believe it was late November, December, with a program to initiate a program as directed by council's priorities from last year. Recommendations that we came away with at that meeting were that some of the trailer parks would not be amenable to having containers, because there's no secure storage, period. And so we've come back and you will be receiving a report in, on the twenty-second regarding this program. There's also, so we have a program that would accommodate both the single-family residences and the trailer parks with both garbage and compost containers for single families and dumpsters, one for garbage and one for compost for the trailer parks, in addition to vehicles to manage those pieces of, of infrastructure. The costs are quite significant, and we will be coming to you in a week with that report. The good news and the opportunity here is that there is also a grant program out there that is very similar to the program that we got for the wastewater treatment plant that we would like council's approval to apply for. And it is due on the twenty-fourth. So a couple of days of timing. And so the cost to enter the program may be negligible for the city's citizens. However, the cost is significant if we are not successful at that grant. I'm sorry to divert the discussion away from the finance.
No, no, it's just, you know, the net gain, if we're saving on compost and spending more on garbage, the net should be pretty well close to being unchanged. So we're increasing the budget accordingly. I'm not a hundred percent why we're going up.
If I might, Counselor, the reason being is that it's going to take us time to implement that program for the municipal collection. And so we're going to have to adjust the rates. We're going to have to purchase and acquire bear-proof containers for both garbage and compost, in addition to the containers, dumpsters for the trailer parks, and equipment to pick up those, those new containers. And so we're looking at, at best case scenario, assuming a grant is available probably a year. If council chooses to push forward immediately, we're still looking at probably six months to a year to fund budget. to fund budget, revise all of the, the fees and, and make that project happen. So we're still looking at at least the end of year before we could achieve implementing a program. And so that's the reason to be conservative in our financing of the tipping fees.
All right, thanks, Mr. Black. Let's not go down the tipping fee rabbit hole until we see what the program is. Appreciate that. Let's carry on, Mr. McCabe.
Thanks, your worship. So the next section is the changes that have an impact on the budget. So they will be increased, they're increasing the operating budget to address some issues that exist within the infrastructure. And, and in a nutshell, it all has to do with maintenance of assets, whether it's buildings or roads. Those seem to be, that is, that is the, the, the theme of this year's budget, really, is maintaining our, our existing assets. And so we, in twenty-twenty, the city staff had a building condition assessment completed on the condition of the buildings. And out of that was provided a rather extensive and very detailed list of projects that need to be done for all the different buildings by year, dollar amounts, et cetera. So it's taken staff, because of the level of detail, a lot of, some time to go through it all and review it. There are some areas where there was some, some things that were identified by the report that have since been completed, and so obviously we don't need to budget to do them anymore. There are some other areas where there's a little bit of a difference in opinion on what the cost will be. And so we're using, obviously, if city staff have a better estimate of what the cost will be, then we've used that. And I've also looked at the budget, we've also looked at it from the perspective of what is actually what I would call capital, so an addition to a building or a large expenditure on a building versus what is operational. And so we've split the list between those two and come up with an itemized list of what is the operational budget and what is the capital and what increases need to be done. And then once we have that, then we got to look at what we are already currently spending just to maintain them the way we have been, and then comparing that to what we've been budgeting, so we could determine how much of a adjustment to the budget was required to address these additional needs. And so from a, a wage perspective and from a, what I call small capital perspective, we looked where we needed approximately an extra three hundred and forty thousand dollars in the operating budget to address all of these needs. And so that was looking at five-year averages, and that's obviously a very large number. So on the capital side, which we'll look at later, it has, though, given us a very clear picture of what needs to be done on the capital side, which then provides me with a clear picture of what we need in the reserves for that, for that expenditure. And so I've been able to look at what we've been putting in versus what we're going to need in the future and then adjust it down, because we're going to shift it over to operating expense instead where it should be, because it's not things that we would capitalize from an accounting point of view. And so the net effect of those two changes is an additional ninety thousand dollars in the operating budget. Hopefully that makes sense, it's a lot of details and a lot of information of moving money around. So if there's any questions on that one?
Yeah, so the ninety thousand net, did that come out of what would have been the capital project list last year?
Not necessarily, no. So we didn't have a complete capital list even last year, like twenty-twenty-one. This report has provided us with some fairly detailed items of what needs to be included and when it should be done and how much it should cost. And so that's what we've done. We didn't have that information historically. This is another piece of the puzzle that staff have been working towards putting together. So we started with the transportation master plan, or, no, sorry, not, sorry, the roads condition report that was done a number of years ago and then updated recently. This is the one for the buildings. And then we've got one, obviously, for sewer, one's coming in the works for water. So it's putting together all the pieces of what it's going to really cost us to maintain all this infrastructure we have in the long term.
So what's an example of something that is now in that ninety thousand net, that's an operating expense that you didn't know about before this report, that now we have to, I don't know, like clean up the vents because of rats? Or what, like, what would be an example of one of these?
Let me see. So there's, one of the items would be updates to plumbing fixtures that need to be done. I have things like, ah, sorry, there is, there is a lot, a lot of detail in this.
Two examples?
Yeah, just a couple would be great.
Yep, yep. A lot of it is things like updating plumbing fixtures, redoing parking lots, upgrading electrical for, for, obviously for newer code, things like that. Does that help?
Yeah, I, I feel like electrical, like, is that something that you would anticipate has to be done every ten years? Like, that seems like a.
It's not every year, no. I, sorry, your worship.
Not unless you're making changes to the building and then you have to upgrade for something. So if we have this building here, we're not doing anything to it, we don't need to open the walls, we don't need to upgrade the electric. If we're going to do something to it, we're bringing in a new line or something like that, then that may force us to upgrade something. So that's kind of what happens. So if we're not touching anything, then you don't need to upgrade.
But that's why I think it should be.
Yeah.
Capital expense.
I think, I think I understand what, what Counselor Ryan is asking. So there is a list of items, various different items over, like, it's actually quite extensive. It's more than even the fifteen years that we use. So what I've done is I've looked at what needs to be done in the next five years and I've averaged it out. So, yeah, I'm not budgeting to do electrical fixtures every single year. One year it might be electrical, the next year it might be plumbing, but I've averaged out the dollars to see how much we need to spend annually on an average basis over the next five years.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
It does, yeah, but just to clarify, like, overall, this line item is basically saying we got a full rundown on all of our building assets and what we need to do to maintain them. And we were already maintaining them, however, we maybe weren't identifying some things, like some of the examples you just gave me, and now we know that we should be doing these things, so that's what the extra ninety thousand dollars is.
Exactly, and as an exa, so as a, as for some context, if I look at the budgets to maintain all of the buildings that the city owns right now, the existing budget that we already had, the operating budget for, just the operating budget, not looking at capital, the operating budget is two point two million dollars in twenty-twenty-one. That's what we were spending to maintain all of the city's buildings. So we're already spending a significant amount of money, so now we need to add some more to it.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's helpful for context, so it's really not like that much of a, like.
No, yeah, yes, and, yeah. So, yeah, yeah, you're welcome. So on a similar note, the next one is the storm sewer wages. We're, I know that eventually Mr. Black will be bringing back some stuff to do with storm sewer and the system and the need to do some major upgrades to it. In the meantime, it's been identified that we need to spend more money actually just maintaining what we have. And so again, for context, we're talking about a twenty thousand dollar increase. The current budget is about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so we'd be increasing it up by twenty thousand dollars. And that would be for the staff to actually do some of the work on the storm sewers before we start all the major capital rehabilitation work that will need to be done in the future.
Thank you.
Roads and snow removal, same kind of idea again, sorry.
So, sorry, just, I was thinking back to that last point. Does I include the museum building and stuff? Like, not any capital projects, but the maintenance, it's considered was part of that assessment? Okay, thanks.
Yes, yes.
Carry on, thank you.
So the roads and snow removal, again, it's the same, similar idea. We have a budget for it. I honestly, I thought I had subtitled what the actual amounts were and I realize now I haven't, and I, my apologies. But again, we've identified that we need to be spending more. There's been a lot of deferral historically of major road repairs, not so much in recent time, but historically there was. And Mr. Black can probably speak to the condition of the roads. And so it's, we need to be doing more to maintain what we have. And there's also extensive additions to the roads, such as roundabouts that need to be maintained, et cetera. And so all of that is resulting in a need to increase the budget to maintain what we've, what we now have.
Great, thank you. I think we all, all drive those roads and kind of know what the pot holes are. Counselor Ryan?
So all those three, the storm sewer, roads, snow and parks and trails, it says wages specifically? So is this saying that we need more employees to do this work?
This is just covering their wages to get the work done.
Yeah, yeah.
So is it, so it's wage increases?
No, no, it's not.
I'm confused.
So, so we're going to need to do extra work and the extra work is paying those people. So that's why she's talking about wages. So if, if on the roads, we need to do extra work and it's like filling a pothole, we may have budgeted for the material, but we haven't budgeted now for the staff, so we have to pay their wages. Right, am I explaining that or do you want to do a better job?
Through your worship. It's, it, we've, historically, we've had shoulder seasons, and this feeds into the parks and trails discussion as well. So historically, we've had shoulder seasons. So for instance, we would have snow removal for X number of months of the year. And then there'd be a period between when snow removal ended and when the winter, the spring, summer work started on the roads and parks. And so we'd have this at both ends, in both the, the, the spring and in the fall. We're finding now with, especially with climate change, that we don't have those shoulder seasons anymore. And so the work still needs to be done, often snow's flying and there's still things to be done on the park side. And so there's a need to actually, so historically, these people would have been laid off. And now we're finding we actually need to keep them on to act, to do the work that needs to be done. Does that make sense?
Mr. Parker's going to have one more thing.
One of the challenges that Steve and Mike have shared with me as well, Laurie, is the, they thought they're having increasing difficulty keeping their staff. So if it was by hook or by cart that they were able to get some issues, a snow crew this winter, they almost didn't fill out their role, because people, there's no incentive to stay. If they get laid off for three weeks or four weeks, then they're not back again. So in order to try and keep people, given our context, I think it's a really smart.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you just, I think it should have just said that, like, none of these say that.
That's, yeah, that's, that's.
Whatever, okay.
So you understand it now?
Oh, I do, yeah, I think that could have been a lot more clear, like, we have a hard time retaining people, so this is what this is for, but instead it's like somewhere difficult to interpret, in my opinion, and probably for the public.
Point taken, point taken. I will make a note of that for, for when we go out to the public with this information. Definitely.
Okay, let's carry on, thanks.
So the, the last one is the, what I call the TIR, and again, my apologies for the acronyms, the Transportation Infrastructure Reserve, that is the two percent annual in, increase to the amount that we're putting in there. This is on top of what we're already putting into that reserve. And this is there in accordance with the resolution that was made by council back in twenty-twenty to do this at two percent per year. So this will bring the transfers to that reserve in twenty-twenty-one, it was one point two five million, and this will bring it up to just over one point five two million.
Counselor Ryan?
Is it two percent of, like, taxation?
Yes, that was the resolution.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
And then for some positives, there is, obviously, the Fees and Charges Amendment bylaw has some proposed fee increases in there. And so there is a, a assumption of a one percent increase for most fees that the city collects. And that's where that additional fifty thousand dollars in revenue comes from. I'm going to skip over the next one and go down to the building permit revenue first. That one there, I'm increasing the budget. What we're budgeting right now is about, well, we're going to increase it up to about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand a year. It's a little over the five-year average at this point, but it's considerably less than what was received in twenty-twenty-one. I'm not expecting them to repeat twenty-twenty-one, I think that was an unusual year. But it kind of feeds into the next one, which is the non-market change. And so I'm not sure if council remembers, but every year we make an assumption and we include an assumption in the budget, that we're going to receive a hundred thousand dollars from effectively what's called new construction. So it's assessment value that didn't exist in the previous year, that is going to get added this year that we will then get to tax, so that's new revenue to the city. So for twenty-twenty-two, the non, this non-market change or this new assessment value is about four times our average for the last four or five years. And so that gives us a boost of property taxes that we know we're going to be collecting that wasn't included in our taxes last year. And so then it gives us this little boost. So, you know, a lot of times I think people say, you know, this new development, where's the benefit for the average taxpayer? And this is where it comes out, is in the new tax revenue we collect from all those new buildings that are being put up.
That's right.
What's the new assessment added in twenty-twenty-two, what was the value of that?
Uh, it's a minute, I have it in a little folder here. It was about seventy-five million, I believe, seventy-nine million dollars, yeah, seventy-five million. Seventy-five million dollars in new assessment value was added, that's what the non-market changed. It is subject to some change, because obviously people, some people may appeal that. But B C assessment has told me that they're confident with the number. Our average non-market, like, new assessment addition each year is about nineteen million.
Whoa.
Yes, so Development Services was extremely busy last year. And this, 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 um, this increase also is reflected in, in the permit revenues. It's almost exactly the same, like, the permit revenues were also almost like four times what we expected. And so it does jive, which is really good. It provides me with confidence that the numbers are rela, that are, you know, relate, are reliable. But I'm, I'm not expecting that kind of a duplicate in twenty-twenty-two. So I don't want to go and run to the bank with a whole bunch of new permit revenue, but we can take this one-time increase for the non-market change this year.
Thank you. Counselor Shirley and Counselor Ryan?
So, your worship, looking at this from the aspect of trying to explain it to the citizens and explain it to the community of how our money is shifting, one of the things that I'm trying to listen for is confuse, words that confuse the story. So one of the things that we run into every year is explaining this idea that the assessment, the property assessment values decide how big of the portion of the pie you're going to be responsible for. So to me, talking about additional new revenue is a bit of a misnomer, because it's going to be confusing those two things. Whereas if instead we could explain it where we have a bigger pie, so your portion will be smaller, it's not that we're pulling in additional revenue, because we're not, we set our budget, this is how much money we're going to tax, and then we tax that much money. And the assessment values determine how much each individual property pays, right?
Mr. Parker?
I think I understand what you're saying. You're correct. Council, in the day and curve, is how much money we need.
Yeah.
And whether if the assessment base is a hundred million and it goes up to a hundred or fifty million, you're still under the money. Tax. That's a, that's a question for council at the time of the tax rate by law. However, what we are presenting is to say, if, if everything, if nothing was changed and we, we essentially took the same, we went to, went and generated the same revenue, there's new construction that's going to pay additional revenue.
Right.
Correct.
Yes.
Again, this is just a statement.
Totally fair.
Is, is to say, this is what this means. So where, where the rubber hits the road, then we start getting into your, your revenue models and what, you know, where are you going to put the edges on this?
Yeah.
Because you could say, you know, it depends on how, how council wants to look at it. How do you want to fund new initiatives? How do you want to fund existing initiatives? How do you want to deal with the type of fixed costs that are beyond our, you know, our C P? Says we need a hundred thousand, we just stroke a check. And there's no, so do we either absorb that, use some other money to offset it, or do we increase revenues, whether it's the fees, charges, taxation, whatever? So that's, it's still to be determined. So, yes, I think, I think you're correct.
Yeah.
But we don't know what, we don't know.
No, and fair enough. And I appreciate having it in here to understand what that impact looks like on the taxation side of it. I just want to be really mindful of the words we use, where.
Yeah, the technical, technically, it is, it is, it is assessment growth.
Yes.
Because our assessment, the total assessed value of the city, compared to twenty-one, twenty-two, that's growth. So that, that doesn't mean we pay more money, it just means we're collecting money from, from new sources.
Totally. Well, and. And when we're talking about the budget increase, because once we get through all the, the state of the union, if you will, and once we start talking about what can we say yes and no to, we do start talking about the tax increases that will be resulting from that. So having that understanding for that conversation totally makes sense to me. I was just mindful of the conversation earlier, is how does this go out to the community? And one of the things that I've heard in the past was this conversation, well, the city never takes a pay cut where the rest of us have. And so when we talk about that additional revenue.
It could just mean customer. It's like, it's like.
Yeah.
Business, and you have ten new customers that. Business, and you have 10 new customers that here.
Totally.
It's just new customers. You know, what's, you wanna charge them the same, or whether you wanna give them free, that becomes, that's a council decision.
Okay, Ms. McCabe, have her hand up.
I was gonna say, I'm actually not sure if I need to say it now, or not, actually. Um, so, yeah, so this new assessment, so when we, when I, when we talk about, um, what the tax increase is, we'll always be talking about the tax increase and what it is for the existing property taxes, or the property assessments that already existed. And so then the new market is a, is an addition on to that. They get charged the same tax rate, obviously, but that's where the new revenue comes from. And you're right, it could be explained that it's actually effectively a larger tax increase, but we're offsetting it with this new revenue, so then we're reducing the overall tax increase. Is that, is that what you're thinking?
Counselor Shaw?
I, I don't know yet. I just wanted to bring it up early.
Okay. Good. All right. Counselor Ryan is in person, and Counselor Brooksell. Counselor Ryan, you wanna take my chair for a moment?
Yeah, sure.
Take a moment.
Um, I'm just gonna say that based on the building permits and the non-market change, I feel like those should be higher, and that we can always adjust them later if things change next year.
Okay. We can take a little bit further. It was much higher last year. I don't know what it is.
Mm-hmm. I just think that it should be included, because we do this exercise every year on purpose, so that if things drastically change, and if the bubble bursts or whatever, we can adjust it. But there's no current signs of things slowing down the way it is. So it seems, you know, like, we're not doing a service to tax cares if we're not increasing it more than just 100, well, $350,000 total, when we're experiencing much higher revenues.
Yeah. Um, Your Worship, my one comment would be that's, it is, yeah, so we could, we could increase it more if we know we're gonna be getting more revenue. Um, the challenge would be the following year, when you, if, if you end up getting less, then you've got to remove it back out of the budget, and then it'll have a tax impact at that point. So it is a matter of when you, whether you wanna have slow gradual increases, tax increases, or whether you wanna have, you know, savings one year and then a larger tax increase in a future year. Because right now, we've averaged about 300, 300,000 in permit revenue every year. 2021 was definitely an anomaly on that. Um, and so if we go and say, well, we got a million last year, so let's, you know, put half a million in the, in the budget this year, that extra money, if you, if it, if next year, 2022, ends up being quite a bit less, and you have to pull that out of the budget in 2023, then you're gonna have a resulting tax increase from that. Because you haven't increased the taxes this year for it. Right? Like, you've avoid, or you've reduced the tax increase in the current year, or in 2022, and then you might have to increase it again in 2023. And it would become one of those unavoidable increases, because if you're not collecting the money, you're not collecting the money, and you can't, you have no way of getting around that, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So that's why we don't, that's why we've always based, and it's the same with snow removal. We base it on historical averages, because we know that it's going to fluctuate. Some years, we spend more on snow removal than the budget, some years, we spend less. Right? And so we use that average so that it smoothes out over time, and we're not seeing big swings in people's taxes.
Mm-hmm. Nicole, uh, I was curious, normally, he over or under on those would go to the Financial Stability Fund Reserve Fund, correct?
That is correct. And then we use that to obviously cover when we're over or under. Yeah.
Exactly. And what kind of report do we see on that Financial, uh, Stability Fund?
Uh, when we do the financial statements and we finalize them, then, or before they're finalized, um, I bring forward a report that shows budget to actuals and where the savings have been, or where there's been additional costs if I need to pull money out. And then that comes to council, um, to approve the use of the reserve fund, the reserve to fund those costs, or the savings that go in there. And so the savings don't, yeah, anyway. Sorry, another conversation of the day, but that's the process.
Okay. Just wanna know when it's gonna come out. Thank you.
So, Your Worship is.
Counselor Brooksell, answer your question. Uh, I was just gonna go back to the, the non-market change. You know, you, you say 76 million, but then the big question's also, what percentage of that is commercial versus residential or industrial?
I know that.
This is where the conversation gets incredibly confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah. In, in terms of trying to have a simple answer for people, or a simple way to explain it. And, you know, I'm kind of curious if you happen to know, Ms. McCabe, but.
I, I do. So I actually do get it broken down by class, and so I use that to project what I believe the revenue is gonna be, based on the different tax rates that each class is expected to be paying. Yeah. So most of that increase was residential.
Okay. So, further, Counselor Brooksell's question, do we have that information yet?
The split between the classes, you mean?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I do. I have a non-market change report that I get from B C Assessment that shows me the change, um, by class.
Okay. So at this point in time, when we're talking about residential, are we talking, you know, we're at 50% of that 76 million increase, or what?
Way more. 67 and a half million was residential.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's good. Counselor Shalit?
Uh, so further to that, then, are we gonna be queuing that up for a conversation at the Mill rate conversation? Because I know in the past, it's been looking at that 50-50 split. Um, but if residential has that much market change versus commercial, are we gonna look at adjusting that in some way?
I think that's a longer conversation, probably wait, uh, rate, rate to see the weight, I guess. I, I think, if you have some feelings on that, 70.
Okay. Because I know there's a strategy document put together by the previous council, and we've been going along with that strategy document thus far. It has been a major problem in the past. I think it's been relatively stable up till now, but I think it would be good for this council to take a good look at that and revise that strategy document necessary before the next council comes in.
What can I do? Is it looking at, asking, thank you, she's gracious, she's provided me with a lot of information on the property classes, of just, like, the light and heavy industry. For example, some examples, like, um, taxation, uh, for, let's say, the sawmill has, hasn't even recovered to what it was 15 years ago.
Yeah.
So the city, right, I mean, they made a decision. I'm not judging the city, because cities have to recover that cost in some form or fashion. And, and it was a good decision, not, not a bad decision. Um, but that has caused a cascading effect on budget. So somewhere there's gonna be a tax shift, and, you know, if you don't collect it here, it's gonna shift somewhere else. So I think that's a good discussion.
Okay.
Good. All right. Uh, Counselor Brooksell, did I cut you off mid, uh, mid-question? My apologies.
No, I, I, I think that's, no, I'm fine.
All right. Okay, Ms. McCabe, let's carry on.
Um, the other thing I thought was good to maybe have a little bit of a discussion about was the capital budget. So that's the addition to the agenda, where you've got the printout with the large, on the large ledger-sized paper. It's wonderfully colorful. And so I just wanted to kind of walk through this a bit, so that you can see, because we talked a bit about the Building Condition Assessment Report. And so I wanted to point out where you could see, in here on the capital side, some of the projects that have been added in response to that report, and also other projects that have been added to it. Um, so it's rather large. So as a summary, everything that's in yellow is new to the budget that wasn't in the budget last year. And so for some of them, I just highlighted the descriptions, because it was easier. Um, and so you can see most of it. If it's got B C A after it in brackets, that means it came out of the Building Condition Assessment Report. So I wanted to highlight that further. There are also some other additions that are in here. If they don't, if it's in yellow and they don't have B C A after it, then it means it's a, a new request that's come forward from the department. So I'm not sure if I, obviously.
Building.
Building.
Condition Assessment.
Yeah. Sorry, the acronyms, I know. My apologies. Uh, the other ones that probably to highlight would be, um, under I T on the first page, there's 350,000 in there right now that's being budgeted for streaming upgrades for council chambers, wherever those may be. Um, and so that's being funded, that's being projected to be funded out of the restart funds. Um, I'm trying to see if there's any others. There's, in the roads section, there's a number that are being carried forward that are, that are grant-funded, that will hopefully get completed this year, such as the Airport Way Multi-Use Path. Um, some other new ones that we'll have to have a conversation about how we're gonna fund them, and this is where Mr. Black's gonna come in probably. Um, in the roads section, which is on the third page, there is the school safety improvement. So last year in the budget, we had $232,000 in there, and that is being carried forward to be spent potentially this year. Um, there's also an additional 2 million that's been added to it, and that's been the cost that's been estimated, that was estimated at the time, to do those upgrades. And this is something that council wants to be done, which is, which is good. It's not something that, it's new. And so we don't, I'm showing it as being funded from a reserve, but in actual fact, the reserve, which we'll look at next, doesn't have the money in it to, to cover this expenditure.
I, I noticed, uh, there's a reduced budget projects in the, in the table in green, but there doesn't seem to be any better.
I know, sorry. There possibly isn't. It's not very often that that happens.
Yeah, fair enough.
I keep it there, because I'm optimistic.
There you go.
Um, yes. And then the other new one, which is out in 2023 in the roads section, would be the Fourth Street Calming. That's another, um, addition, and that's another million dollars to do that work.
What, what's the plan there?
Mr. Black, you wanna, uh, engage us with that, that plan?
Thank you, Worship. Uh, we came to council after a petition of the resident Southside area came to, uh, the City Hall in worries about, uh, crossing Fourth Street and, and vehicles passing, vehicles that were turning. So we installed the, uh, pilot program, which were those, uh, pylons or, uh, bollards, to, to create a smaller, uh, road cross-section and provide a place for people to cross, uh, a, a smaller road section and to prohibit vehicles from, uh, passing on the outside of, of vehicles turning. Um, you can see that, uh, with our winter road removals, that, um, some of those, uh, bollards have ended up in the blower and, uh, been pushed into dump trucks, um, and are part of a snow dump at this point. So we will be reinstalling those. Um, the goal was to do this pilot program, so that we could see how well it worked. Um, we did not accommodate bicycle traffic, um, with the bollard program, as it was originally designed as a pedestrian project. So we do need to make some modifications to that, um, to those traffic calming areas. And to do the permanent intersection improvements, which would be, uh, curbs, gutters, um, uh, intrusions into the actual roadway, that would be permanent structure, um, at those three locations, um, 12 separate corners. Um, that would, our estimate is about a million dollars to do that work. And so I think it's, uh, prudent upon staff, um, given the budget constraints. And, um, we haven't yet to see how this works operationally in the summer with a full busy schedule, that, uh, we continue the pilot program and then enter into a design program for, uh, fiscal year '23 to construct permanent improvements at that point in time. So, um, aesthetically, is it perfect? Absolutely not. Um, operationally, does it work? Yes. Can it be better? Yes. And so in light of that, and, and the budget constraints, we're asking that, uh, council consider deferring that for one year, and, uh, we can budget for it for fiscal year '23.
Great. Counselor Ryan and Counselor O'Leary.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, we're, we're gonna see this capital plan list again, right? Just because, like, because it was a late item, I haven't had a chance to really, like, look at it. And, okay. Okay, great. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Counselor O'Leary?
Yes, uh, just on that, uh, calming efforts on, on Airport Way, I think as, as the, the B C Housing gets underway with their major endeavor on, on this old school ground, I think the design and the implications of the extra population in that zone will, will dictate some serious changes in the traffic management in that area. So I don't know, deferring is probably the wisest choice right now, if we're waiting for, if something bigger's coming from B C Housing.
Uh, if I may, Your Worship, uh, to Counselor Elliott, yes. Um, we did require, as part of the B C Housing project, that they, uh, consider installing some traffic calming measures on their frontage of Fourth Street, which will help. And in addition, I believe the traffic study indicated that a, a signal is likely going to be required, um, between the housing projects and Southside Market at that intersection, only because we have roundabouts now at, um, Airport, or Nickel, uh, Camozzi, there's a future roundabout at Airport Nickel, and with free-flowing traffic, um, to the new roundabout at Townley, um, we won't get the gaps that are needed in order to allow vehicles to turn. Um, and so we believe that a traffic signal will likely be warranted sometime in the future, and the housing project is, um, has to provide that service to us as part of their, uh, building of that project. So timing-wise, um, it, it, it seems to work pretty well with their project and, uh, the traffic calming project that the city would be undertaking.
Good. Thank you. All right. Counselor Brooksell?
Uh, through the chair, Mr. Black, I'm curious about the intersection design, construction at Mackenzie-Victoria. So.
Mackenzie-Victoria. Uh, it's, through Your Worship, um, to Counselor Brooksell, yes. Um, so that would be part of the, um, the Grizzly Plaza Upgrade Project, which, um, we have, uh, I believe council is aware that we've, uh, requested an extension for one year of that grant program. And so that we will have time this coming summer to, uh, do a comprehensive review of that intersection and Grizzly Plaza, and to see what that looks like, and, uh, carry forward, um, that project along with the plaza upgrades, uh, at the same time.
Great. Thank you. Counselor O'Leary and then Counselor Ryan.
Uh, just, uh, just a curiosity point for me. What's the total of the grant for this Mackenzie, uh, Plaza upgrade?
Uh, Through Your Worship, I, I, I looked at that number earlier today. Um, I believe it was 439,000 just for the Grizzly Plaza project itself. I'm not certain if that includes, um, the Cities Match and C B T grants, uh, uh, together. I believe it was closer to half a million altogether. Um, not 100% sure. And I believe there's also another 60,000 or 70,000 available for the intersection improvements at Mackenzie-Victoria.
Yes. I, I, I think that message is missed. There's a lot of uproar about, or a lot of pushback about what's been happening to the Plaza. But I say, we've just got close to half a million dollars to make some upgrades, and we'll, we'll just evaluate what's coming, uh, some, some better, some improvements. And let's not be discouraged, or, or be discouraging at the start, uh, which, which is what we face, right, uh, at this point, to this point. So, uh, I think there's good that's gonna follow.
Thank you. I agree with you 100%, Counselor Elliott.
Any other comments, first to Counselor Ryan?
Yeah, the community contribution policy, even though that's something that we've been talking about, it looks like it was added as a new project was there. Um, is that for coming up with the actual policy and putting it in place and all that stuff? Or just any comments about that?
Ms. McCabe?
That's my understanding, is that the budget is to actually develop the policy or policy. I'm not sure how much work has been done on it to date.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah. Um, I could comment on the Grizzly Plaza. The grant was actually 322,000, and then, uh, council approved using funds from the, um, legacy, the R C S D Legacy Funds of about $107,000.
Great. Thank you for that. Counselor Palmer?
Uh, thank you, Mary Solz. Um, uh, just a few, sort of, um, quite up at the 40,000 level. Um, so I just sort of, there's a lot of material. So first of all, thank you, Tanya, for, uh, all the staff here. There's, there's a lot of lines. Um, I was just estimating the lines. We, uh, with the first session, which we spent about an hour, there was 14, 14 lines that we spent about an hour on, and now with the capital, there's about 200 here. Um, spent about 15 minutes on so far. Um, Section 5 for 3, we got about 40 lines. Section 5, we have about 100 lines. Section 8 has 60 lines. So a lot, a lot, a lot of material. So a lot of work, um, yourself and your team putting that, and all, all the staff departments. Uh, it's a lot of information. Um, and then the complexity, things like non-market change and stuff, that's a kind of a discussion that's outside even this, uh, in a way. Um, and so for council, that, it, for, for me, it's just sort of highlighting sort of highlighting the need for a really proactive discussion. And so looking, I'm already thinking about 2023, because how can we take all this? And of course, we're getting into nitty gritty details, and we're like giving them justice. That's not a criticism, it's just a reality. And so, you know, things like the, the discussion that you had on the non-market change, saying, okay, yeah, you have to do that educational piece with us every year, even if we're all the same. And of course, you've got the new council. So, you know, the, the importance of the budget, being that continuum of discussion, and much more timely from my perspective, that just highlights the importance of those high level discussions. So of course, we have the election in October, new council in November. That new council needs to get a work, get to work on the, the new, the budget for 2023, understanding non-market, that whole taxation, and the whole allocation, and all that stuff, which is a big topic in itself, without even getting into the numbers. Then the other, the other thing is budget, at the capital budget, again, we're got this sort of spreadsheet, this discussion, from my perspective, when we start talking 2023, hopefully staff has done all the work for 2023, well before the new council coming in. And we need to have this budget, this capital works 2023 in, in the fall. So those are just a couple of comments. And I really am thinking about that, because I'm just saying, how can we make sound decisions in the timeframe that we have right now? I note the tax increase somewhere in here, that there's an assumption of 1% tax generates about $126,000. So that's a really useful threshold for me. So going back in the first section there, the net change of what was considered in the lingo there was minimal impact or unavoidable, and then some impact decisions, decisions of 168, net 168, 178,000. Forgot to do the math on that. That ends up being, I can do it really quick. No, it's way more than that. So 78 divided by 126. So we're talking a over 5% tax increase just on that, before all the increases going in. And yes, there's this market, a market increase, which was about 1.6% of new, new revenue coming in. So you can offset that. But we're talking big, big, big numbers here, and it's a cumulative effect. So Mayor Solz and council, basically what I'm saying is, this is, this is a big, big project. And I just, you know, really wanted to dive down into the details of the capital, that, but there's this big picture that we need to deal with. And so those are just some of the comments, because we can spend on any one of these. And we should be spending that kind of time on, you know, capital expenditures. Do we spend this? Do we not? Certainly we'll have a, make the statement again, and I'll make it again after this, on the capital project, is staff going to get it done? And so I, I would strongly encourage on the, you know, as we move ahead, the capital plan, really ask that question. We're February now, you know, are we really going to get this work done? There's not much time left in the year and from, from a capital works perspective. So this is just some general comments, but I'm just trying to keep it at that high level.
And I appreciate those comments, because those, those are the facts. And you look at, you know, our engineers and, and public works have told us in the past, if we, you know, if we're not planning by November, we may not be getting that work done, because we can't get contractors, that sort of thing. So appreciate that comment. And we'll go back to staff with that as we move forward. Counselor Sherlett, you had your hand up.
I did. Counsel Palmer has a good point, and it got me thinking too, because this is something that I've been pushing on, is that as we make these decisions and we look at whether we do a project or not, is what policy or what strategy does that particular project speak to? And to take that 100 foot level, big picture view, right, if you will, where with the building assessment report, with the building maintenance now, part of the plans that we can then look at is how does this fit with our strategic, strategic goals as a council and as a community? So that as we're looking at these, we're not necessarily getting into the, I don't want to get into the details. I think Counsel Palmer has a good, great point, but we don't really need to talk about the details of why we're doing things, but the why of why we're doing things. So that we can make sure that those policy documents speak to something that we still believe in, that if something needs to be adjusted, I think that's where it needs to be adjusted. And to the point about resources, is I keep trying to think of ways to make the triple bottom line a functional part of these decisions, where this is looking at the economics of the whole thing, but it doesn't look at the environmental impacts of the work. So like when we're looking at GHD, GHD remissions, reductions in the emissions, is if some of this work is speaking to that strategy, and there's going to be environmental benefits, can we measure that in some way so that we can see the balance? It's going to cost this, but we're going to get this. And to the HR part, where it's not just financial resources, we need to accomplish a project, it's also those HR resources and the capacity of our outside resources, like will there be contractors available? It's outside of our control, we don't know, but just be aware of.
And that, and that comes back down to what we were talking about earlier, the big, the big picture of overall staff. We can be talking finances till we're blue in the face. The reality is, what can we get done?
And why do we want to do it? Because I think, to your point, Tim, is looking at the next council, and when I'm talking about communicating and training on how taxes work, I'm not necessarily talking about us, I'm thinking about that budget document we put out to the public. And especially on an election year, I think it's very important that we frame that conversation in a functional way that helps educate the community a little bit more every year. And so that any potential candidates that might be thinking about running for council, have a good understanding of where we're at. Let's pose some questions on, okay, so the school safety has been a big issue in our community. It's going to cost money. Let's make sure that's a question of new councillors potentially coming in. Would you support this? Would you support raising taxes to make sure this happens? Because I thought I'd like to make sure we know that going in. But now is when we can have that conversation. If this is going to cost money, let's ask the question. What do we do next?
Counsel Palmer. Thank you, Mayor Solz, and to Counsel Sherlett. It did trust you. Our thinking is very, very different, but sometimes we have to get to the same place. Yeah. So I, I had just been saying, you know, we need to have that capital budget discussion in November with the new council. But I think you make a good point, that maybe we should be having that discussion in September. And ideally, staff are prepared for whatever the capital plans are by September, they should be.
Yeah.
For 2023. And I know the discussion here is about the 2022 budget, but 2023 becomes important. So I'm trying to set, you know, better, better habits. So I think that's a very valid point.
Yeah. And maybe some things, I know, your worship, Mr. Thacker was talking about putting together a training session potentially for September, that this might be part of that experience, where there is a one hour session or a supplementary session on, here's all the capital projects we're thinking about doing, here's what they're going to cost, here's some opportunities, just so you're aware, that this is what we're already looking at doing. So that there's a general understanding in the community going into the election of what is on the table already, before people bring new ideas or new technologies without knowing.
Ms. McCade wants to weigh in.
Thanks, your worship. I think that that is, that, and that is what you're talking about, is I think where staff have been trying to get to now for a number of years, because historically, we had a five-year financial plan, but really, the gist of the discussion was always on that first year of it, specifically operationally, but more so capital-wise. And so then each subsequent year, you, you theoretically, you roll it forward one, and the, you know, the first year drops off, and you add one to the end. And now the first year of your capital plan should be the second year of the one from the year before, and there shouldn't be a lot of changes to it. And so that's where the push to start thinking big, longer term, the 15-year timeframe is for this reason. That's where all these plans come from, whether it's a building condition, condition assessment, the road, it's, you know, all these different plans that we're doing to understand the, the needs and the, the money that needs to be spent to maintain what we have, so that we can then understand the impact of what needs to be, like what it's going to cost, what the impact is of the cost of new assets, like, you know, improving school safety, or the safety on the roads around the schools, or calming the traffic on Fourth Street. And so, yeah, it kind of feeds into that. Really, this is a five-year plan. And so the trick is, the, the challenge is to start thinking of it as a five-year plan. So right now, when you're looking at this, we are talking about the stuff that's in the budget, in the capital plan for the next four years as well. And so that's where, yeah, if you've got questions about those, speak up, because that's what we're, that's what we're looking at. This should be the guiding document, so that when we start up, even when we get to the fall of this year, we know what capital plans are already in there, what projects are in there for 2023. We should be able to use that as our basis and support for moving forward, so that we're not always behind the eight ball. And it takes some time. We've been working on this for about four years now. And it does take time, but I think we are, we're getting to that point. We have a lot of these plans in place. We understand now what's needed. And so now it's a matter of, okay, now we know what we have to spend, how are we going to get there, right? And what's the process? Because there's some big numbers here, and these are not going to get solved in one year, and potentially not even in three or four years. But it's something we have to be working towards solving. And that's what we've done with the roads, right? There's been this gradual increase of what we're putting, at one point, we were spending no money on maintaining roads. And now there's 1.5 that's going in approximately, just for major rehab, and that's not including patching and paving. So I think, you know, there's been a lot of progress made, there's still a lot to go, but there has been a lot of progress made. And so, and that kind of feeds into the next piece of paper that I wanted you to look at, and that is the fifth one, the one with the number five on it. I believe it's got a green tab. And that is the 15-year projection for reserves. Now normally, when I bring you the long-term financial plan, this document's in there, but there's no red numbers in it, because by the time we're bringing something forward for consideration by the public, we, we can't have red numbers. We have to have, we can only be spending, we have to have a balanced budget. And so this is to highlight to you guys where the challenges are. And there's, there's challenges with the transportation infrastructure reserve. There's challenges with the reserve we use to fund our vehicle and equipment. As we expand, as we have more to maintain, obviously we need more equipment to do that, and there's a cost to maintaining that equipment. And so the change a few years ago, historically, where we went from borrowing money over five years to buy the new equipment or replace it, we've, we did this very harsh cutoff, where we said, no, we're not going to borrow externally anymore. We're going to fund it with, you know, through operations and internal funding. And so we're getting there, but there's still some, there's still some ground to be made. And then obviously, you can see, I've included the utilities, even though we're not talking about them today, so that you can see that there's also challenges in those two reserve funds in the future. So it's, it's all one big picture eventually that council has to consider. And so in the report, I particularly highlight the transportation and the vehicle and equipment reserves, and the challenges with them, and give some ideas of what options there are for resolving this. And so this was, it's similar to the conversation that was held in 2020, same, basically, the options are still the same. But it's something for council to think about, because this is not incorporated into the budget summary I gave you, where Counsel Palmer talked about what that percentage tax increase is out of just those numbers. This is on top of that. And so we need to, there needs to be some decisions made about what needs, what really needs to get done, what council wants to see done, particularly before your terms are up. You know, if you've got some things that you want to get done, this is, this is the year to do them. But then I'm also understanding, we have to figure out how to pay for it all. Because unfortunately, we can't do it all. But, yeah. So that's the things I need you to think about and mull over before we meet again.
Counsel Rowley?
Yes, Gary. Thank you, Tim, for bringing up the capital quagmire we can go into. There's so much information that we, that can draw us down many different, different, different avenues there. But, but the conversation we haven't had is service levels. And I think if you're going to build a budget, you start with service, and what are we providing? And everything to this point is, we're doing the same thing, maintaining exactly the way we are, or adding to it. And I'm saying, when do we get the conversation going about, can we do things differently? And that's something that starts, starts, it should be at the start of the budget process, rather than get, once we get bogged down to everything. So just my comment.
Very true.
That's a good point. And, you know, we, we need to, that's that overarching document, because the service level is always an important thing. You know, in some places, we want to keep that service, and in others, we can find alternatives. So having that conversation is important. So, so you're muted.
Yeah, your worship, I just think we need to have that conversation first, before we can carry on the rest of this, what we do here.
Okay. Okay. So Mr. Thacker and Counsel Ryan. Okay, let's go.
Yeah, the arenas in there, does that mean that we've got money lined up in reserves for that? Since it's in the budget for 2019?
My apologies. Sorry. Yes. So that is funded from the General Capital Reserve. So that one's, that reserve is a little bit more, better funded at this point. And that's partly because we now have a better idea of what we need to do long-term to maintain the buildings that are, where the, you know, the spending on them is funded from that reserve. And so now we have a better picture, because we have this condition assessment report. It helps me project out those 15 years. So now I really know what we need to be spending on the buildings.
Does that mean, though, that when that next council is trying to make that decision, that they're not going to need to dig deep into some other places, because it's been included in this budget?
Are you talking, sorry, are you talking about the 7.2 million for the roof?
Yes.
That is assumed, the assumption is that we would be funding that with debt. We don't have 7.2 million in any of the reserves, unfortunately, to fund that kind of a repair to a building. Yeah. My apologies for misunderstanding.
That's okay. Is the interest at least on the debt included in the plan?
That would be in the operating side, yes. And so you look at, there's a, a debt line near the, ah, sorry, I'm going to tell you which document it's in. I think it's document two. And it's probably down the last page or the second to last page. Yeah, on page four of the second document, which is the General Operating Fund, the Detailed 15-Year Financial Plan, with lots and lots of lines, as Counsel Palmer pointed out. Yes, there's even more. I've hidden a lot of them, so you don't have too much detail. There is a line that says total debt and interest charges. And so that's what we're spending. And you'll see in 2024, there's an uptick in that number to the
Oh, I see. Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's the debt servicing cost for the roof replacement.
Okay, so let it be known, that for the next council, there should not be an interest increase for the operating budget, because it's already been budgeted.
Yeah. It's in the budget, it'd be in the tax increase for that year, obviously.
Mr. Thacker?
Yeah, the tax increase would only apply once the, once the money is spent, paying your debt. So that, the
So even if we budgeted for it?
I would say, I think.
What's the point of budgeting? I'm so confused. I thought the whole purpose of doing a 15-year financial plan was that we're setting operating rates, so that assuming nothing changes, these are the rates we need to cover our bases.
That's correct. We would have to set the revenue aside and need the expenditures aside.
Right. So we know that that interest is going to go up now.
The interest rate.
Right?
Are you referring to the interest rate when we go to market?
Yeah, the extra money that we're going to need to pay for the debt.
So yes, we anticipate there will be, there'll be some increase in bond interest rates. It's still going to be low as far as the interest right now. I suspect that project, from what I understand, is probably two years out at the earliest. So I think, I don't think it'll be until '23 or '24, before we actually, we actually see the work done.
Yeah. Like, I, I think the disconnect for me right now is, is even though we go through this process every year, and this is great, because we see what's coming, if we know that, that is going to happen, that increase is still going to, that operating increase is still going to happen in 2023. But I was, I was increase is still going to happen in 2023, but I was, I was kind of hoping that this would smooth, like, is there a fifteen-year chart that shows what the predicted budget increases, or, yeah, taxation increases would have to be there, is, okay.
Ms. McCabe, you got your hand up?
Thanks, your worship.
I think I, if I'm understanding Counselor Ryan correctly, I believe what you're suggesting is that if we know that there's going to be this increase in three years and what we're going to have to be paying to service new debt, then maybe we should be considering increasing rates earlier to start building up the baseline so we have the money there so it's not such a big increase in that particular year, is that what you're referring to?
Kind of, though, I get, I like, I see the point of not wanting to do it early, I, I'm just missing that, or not missing it, but I just want to look at the-
Yep.
Um, I'll find it, anyways, that's all, sorry.
So, I know that, I know you have a copy this afternoon as to where to get to, and I don't want to deviate, I don't want to deviate too much from that. Um, just before we go back to Counselor Ryan, just looking at number five, we have the statutory reserve fund, so cemetery perpetual care fund, same value across for the next, you know, twenty-year sort of thing.
Yep.
Um, we built that, I know, so incrementally slow, and any interest on that goes back to service of what we need to do in the cemetery, I get that. Is there a percentage that you think that that is growing? I know that we should be looking at, you know, what we, what it actually costs us to operate that cemetery, and we're talking about that this year, but for the perpetual care, where that's on, you know, product that we sell, um, so the cemetery plots always have a perpetual care that, the columbarium, we don't so much call it perpetual care, but there is a care fund, a perpetual care fund for that. So, are we increasing at all, or is that, that so minimal, it really doesn't show up there? And I'm just doing this in a general term, honey, I don't want details.
Yep, yeah, uh, thanks, your worship. So, that one there, because it is a, a cost-funded function with the regional district, so whatever expenses there are in the cemetery on the operating side, there'll be an equivalent amount of revenues on the revenue side so that it ends up having no impact on the city's operating budget, the taxpayer still pays for it through the regional district requisition, obviously. Um, I don't actually make projections of how much this fund is going to grow over time, but as we collect money for the perpetual care fund, then it would be put into this reserve, so that number will grow over time, and then the interest earned on it, you're correct, it does get drawn back into supporting the operations, but again, it just reduces the amount of money we get from the regional district to fund this operation, and so, I don't project out at that level of detail just because the impact is not, it's not as large, it's a small amount. It doesn't mean I can't, but something to think about for the future, for sure.
Yeah, all right, thanks. Counselor Ryan?
Um, yes, I found that, I find, I mean, it's very helpful now, so thanks, I see that that's in there, so just projecting all the increases you're here. Um, I was curious, in the list of capital projects, where is the bearware upgrades? Like, where is that shown?
It's not in there, it's not in there at this point, Counselor Ryan.
Okay, so that was a request, though, so-
It was.
Yeah, so when the, when those adjustments that you're talking about, Mr. Thacker, you get made, I would be hoping that that gets put in there. That's all, thanks.
Okay, we're going to turn it back to you, Ms. McCabe, where do you want to go from here?
Actually, I'm, that's what I wanted to do, is bring forward the changes, go through them, have a conversation about what they are so that council can ask questions, and obviously, talk a little bit about, not so much the capital projects specifically, because I think that needs some more digesting, but more about just some of the challenges, and then asking for council to consider and look at the different options that are available to address some of these shortfalls. I haven't provided a recommendation at this point because I think it's just important for council to understand what the options are, and then we can have a conversation about that at a subsequent meeting.
So, councilors, is there any concerns or any questions that you have further to what, we have so much information that's been given, it's going to take a while to delve down, just if there's any questions at this point, Counselor Palmer?
Uh, yeah, so, thank you again, couple, just sort of, listening, sort of a couple illustrative ones, so the arena roof replacement at 7.2 million, um, this proposed plan, capital plan, that's scheduled for 2023, we had a capital plan last year, when was that scheduled last year?
Probably in 2022, I keep bumping it out one year because it doesn't look like it's getting, yeah.
So, yeah, so further to your point, um, I know that in 2019, or 2020, I believe it was in the, for 2021 and going back, so the other question over the last few years, uh, this goes to Counselor Ryan, it's just, this is really just illustrative of budget complications. So, that 7.2 million, Counselor Ryan said, okay, next council, don't worry, you've got all the money you need, how much did we increase that for inflation this last year, which was at least double of what was maybe anticipated, like, I think we're 4.5% 2021, so, yeah, do we, yeah?
It has, no, three, worship, it has not been increased at this point, I do know that the engineering department is working on coming up with a, a more realistic estimate of the cost, because I believe there are some options that will need to be considered. I've left it in the budget as a placeholder to remind us that that is coming down the pipe, I don't want council to, if I don't have it in there, then there's a risk that council doesn't think about it, I guess is the best word, and so, I don't, I want to keep it there so that we can see that, yes, this does need to get dealt with in the future so that it's back of, in the back of everyone's mind. But, yes, there's definitely some questions about the dollar value that we're budgeting and whether or not it's a roof replacement or what other options there are, because there are a number of different options, and they have been discussed over the years, and so, I think that it's definitely going to have some more conversations, probably not, well, I, anyways, I'm not going to speak to when because that would be under Mr. Black's purvey, but, yes, it's definitely something that I'm aware of and haven't adjusted at this point.
All right, and then, so, some general comments that I think is relevant, so, the mayor asked some specific things on the perpetual trust care fund, and of course, we have this fifteen-year plan, and you say, okay, well, 164,000 isn't very much, however, we have dozens and dozens and dozens of lines and cumulative effect, and it becomes very, very big. So, understanding the good intentions of a fifteen-year financial plan, I would suggest that not only is anything beyond the five years illusionary, I think it's probably closer to delusionary, and just further to our conversation, can we actually have a good five-year financial plan, which is our statutory requirement? So, to me, those numbers are important, and it creates problems in the future by having underestimates, something for staff to think about, it's something I've been harping on for years and years and years in different roles, but, and then, also, where that placement, you know, is it realistic that we can actually get the project done like that in 2023, I would suggest not, because we don't really have a plan to do that, and it's too big of a project. So, something, just those little things, I think, are important. Just a general comment, I think we brought this up in the, our last meeting, finance committee meeting, I can't remember what it was, but when we get to your operational budget, which is, that's the service levels that Counselor Elliott was talking about, which is, from my perspective, I absolutely 100% agree with Counselor Elliott, those are the first conversations, but it's like way too late to have that in 2022. We can't make labor adjustments or anything, it's just, pretty much impossible to make any significant service level discussions. However, that discussion is absolutely important, and we should be having that discussion, maybe in context for 2022, but really, implementation on service levels for 2023, which of course, we have the purvey of a new council. Yeah, so, thanks.
Counselor Shavat?
So, further, what does that look like? What, I don't know that we've really had a functional service level conversation in our council term, I would love to hear what that could look like.
And so, yeah, we're talking about, we've been doing the organizational reviews or starting those, and so, that kind of gives us maybe a framework for where we go with service levels-
Yeah.
-from each department here and there, and then it comes to council to determine what we think is going to be suitable, but I'm going to go to Mr. Thacker.
So, I'm down to service level standards project, um, it is a significant amount of work.
Yeah.
I would probably take one person in this organization, probably a year, from start to end, I would say probably a good six, three to six, I don't want to say, it's a significant amount of work to put together, because we want to understand how many services are there, probably a hundred services that the city provides, what is the, what is the labor cost, what is the, the one-end cost, what is the capital cost, and then we want to lay that out. There are some examples, there's a lot of this being done, if you look at the town of Bath or the town of Cam or the stuff, it's, 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 and how we do it. But, yes, I think we should do a service level standard process, but I'd say it would be a good year, because of the transition of the councils, and it's a lot of work in our, certainly, our current, currently, there's no capacity in the area, but it's certainly off of my mind on how we can do it, and I've been through it, and it can be a very, very useful process, because then, once you've described it, council can just say, oh, okay, we want to maintain, or we want to increase, or why are we doing this, why have we been doing the cemetery if the, you know, if the arty owns the cemetery or we own the cemetery, who should be doing it? Or, you can ask those questions, and I'm not saying I'm judging.
Okay.
Okay.
Follow-up to that, then, in that service level review, what are the metrics, like, is it about, is, I'm just bringing it back to that triple bottom line idea, where it's not just a financial metric, but what is the social value of the service and what is the environmental cost of the service, especially now that we're looking at everything from a climate change lens?
Yes, so, you can look at that, you have, it's a lot of work to put some numbers and metrics to that.
Yeah.
Um, this is evolving, but certainly, to create a baseline, we need to have some really good numbers and a really good understanding of what the services are and the costs, like, the actual cost, because one of the things we don't, one of the things that I'm finding is, we don't have a true, true cost of service for utilities. And so, when we, when I dive into, say, the water fund and look at what the true cost of the water fund is, when we get into the details, we're not allocating it, we're not fine, we're actually subsizing it, but, yeah, sewer fund doing the same, so, all these, all this cash flow, that's the, quite honestly, the water sewer general fund model is kind of a dinosaur, but that's what AC does, so, you know, whatever, that's fine, it is what it is, and, so, yeah, it's, it's a lot, it's a big project, it's a very useful project, and it's something I think would benefit by, and I think it would take us a good time, Steve looks like wants to say something.
Good, Counselor Palmer?
Uh, thank you, a follow-up to that, you said about one-year process, are you talking, you said a big project, useful project, so it's-
I'd have to look at that, like, if, if everything was working fine, it would be, it would be six months.
So, the-
Mr. Black has his hand up, maybe he would like to weigh in.
Yeah, can I just ask, just, because it's actually a simple question, so I'm accepting that it's a big project and concur with that, and that what you're talking about is a very robust service level, rather than cursory, or magnitude, do you have a sense of what that would cost?
I don't really know.
But probably, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars or more.
Mr. Black?
I don't want to say because I don't know, I think, I think it would take, I don't know, because whether we do it internally with our own capacity or it's a combination of stuff, but I, I don't, yeah, it's going to cost some money, sure, I can say, you could put a place a little bit in it, but I couldn't say, because I don't know enough.
Yeah, good.
Mr. Black, can I add at this point?
Thank you, your worship, boy, it's, this is such a great discussion that, that we're undertaking at this point in time. Funny enough, staff, as you know, are, we're dabbling in a lot of different areas and trying to, to come to a place where we have a thorough understanding of our utilities and our operations and floodplains and utilities, water pipes and wastewater treatment, so, to short story, we have just received some RFPs proposals for a level of service framework that will help identify our assets, infrastructure work plans, programs, budgets, how we track level of service over time, how we communicate to residents, what those costs are and what the level of services are, and this will be based on public feedback, providing effective tools for council to make decisions, and both from an environmental and a financially sustainable way, identifying existing services that we have built on natural assets, enable service delivery. So, that just closed last Friday, we as staff, or actually, the Friday before last, staff in the engineering department just completed our proposal review and have a preferred consultant that we will be coming to council for a word of contract here in the next couple of weeks, I'm hopeful, and so, that will be undertaken here for the next three to five months, I believe the timeline was to be complete end of July for this study, so it will be done prior to the end of the year. We did throw in a budget for the consultants to consider as part of their submission of $50,000, and we did receive three submissions in that ballpark. We also have in that staff time is, is a part of our contribution for the grant that we got for this, including a 10% contingency fund, so, we should be well on our way to identifying all of these, these tools for council's consideration here, and not in time for this budget, but before the end of the year, and the timing is, is unfortunate in, in, in the framework of this discussion today.
Great, Counselor.
Well, in light of that, then, that seems like it might line really nicely to have a service levels conversation in the fall, where, at least a preliminary overview of where we're at, and just to my previous point of trying to make sure the next council or the candidates for the next council are as well-versed as they can-
Yeah.
-where we can have the conversation and reflect on our lessons from our term and make sure those lessons get passed on in a publication form, even if they don't attend, they can watch them.
I'm sorry, like, if we're, if we're going to the whole organization, and I still stick by my original comment-
Right.
-but what Steve's doing is going to be great to inform that-
Right.
-because it's going to be, like, there's a lot of parts to it, and we've actually got, you know, all the services we do, there's a lot of things that we do, we just, if we almost think of doing it before, we just say, okay.
Well, and I think long-term, yes, it would be, I can see where it's going, it's exciting, but to at least have a preliminary, here's what we got, it's not perfect, it's not super clean, but here's an overview of all the services that we do, and the status, especially with the utilities, because it has been such a complicated issue, that we've been learning as we go over a whole term, but to make sure we can set up the next council term with at least a basic understanding of what that looks like and how it works, to be able to have a more functional conversation on the other side.
It is, and part of, part of what, yeah, what, how will the money flow into different funds-
Yeah.
-and follow that money, make sure we understand what that is, what is, what isn't, and that will really tell us, so we need to create a baseline and then be there.
Yeah, great, okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions, Ms. McCabe, you have a hand?
Yeah, just going to make a comment that, so, as a prerequisite for next, the next meeting in two weeks, and we're going over the utilities, we will, we can start out that meeting with a, a review of what we've discussed today and any questions that council has, or any thoughts or ideas or suggestions at that point, we can certainly start with that point as well, or we can do it at the end of that discussion about the utilities, but just wanting to let you know that the next meeting is, you know, where you can come back with further questions. And in the meantime, if you've got something that's a little bit more detailed or whatever, you can certainly reach out to me, and I can help, hopefully, try to understand some of the numbers, because- of the numbers, because as Counselor Palmer pointed out, there's a lot of lines and a lot of numbers, unfortunately.
Uh, good, Counselor Palmer has a comment?
Uh, two questions. So when, when's your next, um, meeting that we're going over budget?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks' time, and then, uh, sir, I know you said a bunch of stuff, but there's a bunch of information, so, uh, and then the focus of that meeting will be on?
Utilities.
Utilities, okay. And then, so one, one comment that I missed from before that I was going to mention, and we brought it up before, was the, the, the baseline of where we've been for the last three years. So if we, when we get into operating, operating budgets, I, I know Counselor Elliott and Counselor Palmer are going to need to see that information, I'm sure the other councilors as well will need to see that historical information.
Yes, and that is in the package. Um, I've provided, I believe, five years of historical on the operating side for you, so budget to actual.
That's a package to-
No, the one in front of you. Um, it is, uh, tab number four.
Okay. Okay, yeah, thank you for that information.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, anyone else?
There's a lot of information.
Good, all right, so we'll get a chance to, uh, to review this privately, and if you've got any questions, we'll come to you. Otherwise, we'll bring our questions in a couple of weeks and, uh, review then. All right, thanks, Ms. McCabe, thanks, staff, appreciate your time. I'm going to ask for someone to make a motion for termination. I, Counselor Ryan, second, I, Counselor Brooks Hill, all in favor? Motion-